He's definitely more willing to come and give more and talk about it.
We are live, yeah. Has everyone that wants to speak had a chance to fill out a speaker card for tonight? I'll take that as a yes. Everybody ready? I'll call this meeting to order. For all those that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Let us pray. We come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve the people of Republic. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our community. Grant us clarity, unity, and integrity in all that we do. Help us to lead with compassion, humility, and spirit of cooperation. Bless our city, its leaders, the first responders, workers, families, and all who call Republic home. May this meeting honor you and reflect a sincere desire to build a stronger, safer, and more vibrant community. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good evening and welcome, everyone, this evening. At this time, we will move on to citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. Out of respect to everyone who is giving their time here this evening, we ask that you keep comments concise and focused and that we maintain mutual respect. Please know that we may not have all of the answers immediately, but you are being heard and we will do our best to address the concerns. We will now open citizens' participation. We will have, I'm going to take these in the order that I have given them. So, Ms. Susan Peck, would you like to come forward? And if you would come forward, please, and give us your name and address, and then let us know your concern.
Okay. My name is Susan Peck. It's 6810 West Farm Road, 182 Republic, and this is regarding Schuler Creek Trail.
Schuler Creek Trail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I'm going to read this so I don't forget anything.
Sure. We've got three minutes.
Okay. I'm sure that Republic Bills will tell you that Schuler Creek Trail has been successfully completed. However, for some of us, property owners along the trail, it is not finished. This has been an unpleasant experience dealing with Republic Bills over the last several months, literally from day one, and they made sure to continue it right up until the end. They used our land to suit their purposes and then walked away with no care or concern whatsoever with what they left behind. We were promised time after time that the portion of our land that was used for temporary construction use would be put back better than before. We were also told the area would be graded well when finished, and we would be consulted to see if we were happy with the grading before anything further was done, but that did not happen. We talked to the construction foreman out in the field on Saturday morning, May 10th, about needing additional topsoil added to create a more gentle and gradual grade, and also about having the asphalt in one area of the trail trimmed because it's too wide there and encroaches on our property where the fence will be put back. Angel drove up while we were there, so we talked to him about these problems and asked him to have them fixed. He told us that he would have to take it to the higher-ups as he didn't have the authority to make that decision. We previously had a nice, flat, level field that was perfect for haying and easy to take care of, however, all that was changed when the trail went in. Now, we have, we find the current grading is too steep in most areas and needs topsoil added to create a more gentle grade. We have spoken to our hay cutter, and he said the way the slope is currently graded makes that area unusable for haying. No one from Republic got back to us on fixing these problems after our conversation with Angel. Yet on Monday morning, we found that grass seed was being put down everywhere and covered with straw, which is the final step in a project like this. There was no attempt to fix these problems nor even to contact us before they called it finished. I called Republic Bills about this the next morning. It was basically blown off. Then last week, on Wednesday, May 14, I discovered a crew working on the trail in front of our property. I walked down there and found a workman pouring concrete for two large storm drains cut through the trail and directed out onto our field. These drains were added to carry away the storm water that now collects in two areas of the road when it rains. The water problem is a result of a design flaw in the trail, but Republic Bills made the decision to direct the storm water off the road into our field to fix the mistake. The results of these drains will be erosion and ruts in the field, and the storm water will also carry trash and cigarette butts. Basically, anything that is on the road will wash right out into the field. And for the record, it's illegal for a city to direct their storm water onto private property like this. We did not give consent for this, nor were we even notified by Republic Bills that this was planned. We expect these drains to be removed immediately. There are other avenues that can be taken to mitigate your storm water problem on the road that do not involve directing it onto our field, excuse me, and causing erosion and damage. We need these problems corrected. The Republic Bills has created on our property. They used our land and should now be bending over backwards to make the landowners happy and to put our properties back better than before, as we were promised, but instead, we were left with conditions much worse than before, and Republic currently has no plans to take care of it.
Thank you, Ms. Peck, for bringing that to
I have a
to council's attention this evening.
This is a copy for what I'm giving Republic Bills.
Thank you, Ms. Peck, for coming here this evening and addressing council. We really appreciate you coming to address all of us. Do we have anything to add to that, Mr. Cameron?
Nothing. I mean, I can talk to staff tomorrow about it, but nothing to add right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. And like Mr. Cameron said, we'll check into that and get back with you, Ms. Peck. So, thank you for coming here this evening. Moving on to our next speaker this evening. Is it Ms. Gina Pennywell? Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. Would you mind coming forward and please give us your name and address for the record, please? Then we've got three minutes.
Hi, I'm Gina Pennywell, 102 Island Green Drive, Republic.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I live at Island Green, and I drive up and down Beale in Illinois every day. And more and more, there seems to be, to me, there seems to be a safety concern because there are more pedestrians using that that road, and Illinois as well. And now, we have children on scooters and bicycles, and it just, it's very scary. So, I'm wondering if there's any way to get a sidewalk there. I guess last year, I reached out to Bills and asked about it, and, I don't know, they didn't seem to think that they had a way to do anything about it. So, this year, I went to the, there were some town halls for the commissioners, Christian County Commissioners, and I spoke there with some of those folks, and there was a roads person there, and I spoke to her, and she gave me some ideas. And then I came to the planning commission here, Republic, in this room, couple, last week, maybe, and I spoke with Chris, and he said, "Oh, well, you should, you know, talk to the council." So, I'm talking to the council.
Absolutely.
Yes. I have a picture here of what I would propose. Now, I don't, I don't know. It doesn't matter which side of the road. We just need a sidewalk.
So, Illinois Avenue is the road that you're concerned about that doesn't have a sidewalk? Is that?
Beale and Illinois. See, when Beale crosses county line, it becomes Illinois.
Okay. I'm following you now.
Yeah.
And then down to Island Green.
Now, there is some sidewalk on Illinois, but it's up past Civic. So, you know, there's all the way from Island Green to 60. We just need some help.
Sure. No, we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, for sure. So, we'll turn that over to Bills Department and see
You want this picture?
and take that from you. And we have your email. We have your email address here so we can find out what's going on with that. And without taking a look at that, I don't know if staff would have a good answer tonight, but we can definitely get back with you with a good answer.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. So, Ms. Lisa Roller. If we can get you to come forward and go ahead and give us your name and address, even though we know who you are, we'd like to have it for the record, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Lisa Roller, 6618 West Farm Road, 182 Republic, Missouri. Okay, so, we're back here by the trail, about the trail tonight. I kind of favor and I second what my sister-in-law has spoken with you about the field's not being put back the way they should have been. We feel like they've just run us over out there, and now they're done. Boom, we're gone, and you're just going to get what you get. This is why I commented the last time I was in here, and you said if it was above and beyond the bond or the money that you guys received from OTO. I like, I would like to know, now that Karen is back, maybe she can be able to answer these questions for me tomorrow, if I can call her in her office. I want to know who can justify the fact that the application for OTO set a 10-foot trail. Republic Bills, the Highway Department negotiated 1 foot of easement all the way down from the opening to our lane to the storm drain down there. So, we are the only spot out of any of that trail that is at 13.5, 13.5 and 1/2, 13.6, 13.6 and 1/2. And there was 2,007 bought for 1 foot easement. Travis, the surveyor that has been out there several times, has told us it's 1 foot. So, I called Ryan in the mapping department down at the assessor's office. I spoke with Ryan. Ryan went back to the dinosaur days, went back to when it was a dirt road. 25 foot from center has not changed unless somebody's got a magic wand to take 25 foot center back over to the right-of-way where our fences were originally put in by our dad, which also, I got from the electric company, from Steve Sweringer, the original property lines of where my dad had our field fencing in, we had to give the electric company easement. So, not only have they incorporated the electric poles into this project, but they've also taken 3.5, in some areas, more than 10 foot. I mean, I don't do common core math, but a 10-foot trail, and you purchase a foot, 10 plus 1 is 11, not 13.5, not 13.5 and 1/2, not 13.6. So, I like a justification for that because as of where the asphalt is on those overages, needs to be cut back because that is where my fence needs to go back in, and my fence people are going to have to pound into the asphalt at this point to even get my fence back where it was. Also, Travis said that he brought up to the Republic Bills in a meeting that Olson should be responsible to come back out and do a re-survey for the true property lines now that this project is completed. So, we know what we're doing as far as putting our fences back up. I mean, at this point, my field fencing should go straight down. It's going like this. That's not acceptable to me. So, that's my concerns. I know you probably don't have the answers tonight. I know you probably don't have the answers tonight. If anybody from City Council, and thank you, Eric Gurke. He was the only one that came out after the meeting last Tuesday to actually take an interest of what we were actually talking about. I just feel that maybe there should be some other people from the council, whether it's your district or not. Maybe come out and see. Look for yourselves to see what's going on with the projects that you guys are voting III for, million dollars here, a million dollars there. Maybe you need to come out and take a look and see what our concerns are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roller. So, we have gone through everyone that has signed up for public's, or citizens' participation this evening. So, at this time, I'm going to close citizens' participation. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items number 1 and 2, I need, welcome the council to ask any questions or comments on items number 1 or 2. Seeing that there is none, I will need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Moving on to board commission and committee schedules. Our City Council work session will be June 3, 2025, at 5:30 PM. Our City Council meeting will be June 3, 2025. We have a Board of Adjustment meeting on June 5, 2025. A planning and zoning meeting, June 9, 2025. And then our next City Council meeting will be June 17, 2025. There is no old business. So, moving on to new business, item number 3. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-14 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Lisa will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 1.69 acres of real property located at the 7,700 block of West Farm Road 174 from local commercial C1 to multifamily residential R3.
Thank you, Lisa, and we have Patrick Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Patrick Ruiz, Associate Planner. Dan Cat Properties LLC has applied to rezone approximately 1.69 acres of land at the 7,700 block of West Farm Road 174 from local commercial C1 to multifamily residential R3. The subject property is currently vacant and in total is approximately 8.04 acres. The other 6.35 acres of land not being rezoned is currently zoned R3 multifamily residential. If the rezone application were to be approved, it would result in a unified zone property multifamily residential. Staff considers to propose rezone to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comp plan, consistent with the trend of development in the vicinity of the site, compatible with the surrounding land uses, and able to be adequately served by municipal facilities. Based upon this information, staff recommends approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from City Council? Mr. Gurke?
Read just the zoning notes. It looks like there was no opposition.
No, there was no opposition at the P&amp;Z Commission, and nobody called in beforehand having questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurke. Any additional questions, comments from City Council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens here this evening to speak on this agenda item?
I would like to turn the sheet just to ask one question about the old Dock Mart idea, or is that a different piece of property? I just haven't looked it up yet.
No, this is not the old Dock Mart property. Are you talking about the one on 174 State Highway?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not that property. This is on Farm Road 174.
Oh, okay. My bad.
So, as a reminder, do we have one last chance with council, questions, comments, before moving on? Seeing that there is none, and as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that we get with staff if you have any additional questions before the next council meeting. Moving on to item number 4. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-15 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Lisa will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amending the zoning classification of approximately 9.9 acres of real property located at 4297 South Wilson's Creek Boulevard from agricultural AG to general commercial C3.
Thank you, Lisa, and we've got Mr. Chris Tabor here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, Chris Tabor, Principal Planner. City staff have requested the rezone of 9.9 acres directly south of the Bills building. The city-owned subject site consists of two parcels. Both parcels were annexed into the city on May 6, 2025, and entered under the city's agricultural zoning district. Staff are requesting a rezone to general commercial C3, which would match the zoning of this site. The land uses permitted in C3 include civil engineering and construction services, a use which most closely resembles those of the Public Works Cruising Vehicles, including the storage of large vehicles and certain supplies. The subject property is surrounded by general commercial C3 property to the north, medium-density, single-family residential R1M property to the south, Green County Agricultural Zone property to the west, and agricultural AG property to the east, Republic High School across Wilson's Creek Boulevard. The site has access to both water and sanitary sewer services. The subject does not, does not contain, I'm sorry, the subject does not contain any identified sinkholes, but does contain a special flood hazard area. Staff is asking, is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions or comments from City Council?
So, what is a flood hazard? Where is that at?
So, the flood hazard is in the southern part of the parcel there. I can send out something that shows that on the map and get that to council.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. Do we have any other questions from City Council, questions, comments? I hear the neighbors to the north are a little bit noisy. That's probably a good thing, so. Any additional questions, comments from City Council before moving on? Seeing that there is none, as a reminder, this is a first read, so please make sure that you get with staff if you have any additional questions before the next meeting. Item number 5, I have been informed that we are not taking this item up for a first read or discussion this evening. Staff does have some final details to confirm before moving forward, so we will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item. Item number 6, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-17 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title IV Land Use, Chapter 420 Flood Damage Prevention of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Lisa, and we've got Patrick Ruiz here again this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening again. So, this ordinance amendment proposes adopting the new regulations mandated by FEMA and SEMA for participation in the flood insurance rate maps program and the new flood maps. Other than the changes outlined in the staff report, this ordinance language is pretty much identical to the other one that was adopted back in 2010 with the other flood maps. Those changes included, which is outlined in the staff report, are some new definitions, provisions that justify variances for historically registered places, record-keeping requirements for variances, and strengthening of the penalty section. Adoption of this ordinance is required by September 19, 2025, for participation in the firm program. Staff recommends the approval of the reference amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions or comments from City Council? Mr. Gurke?
Any additional costs or anything to us with the new, with the new language?
No, there's no additional costs with the new language, so.
Thanks.
Any additional questions, comments from City Council? Seeing that there is none, as a reminder, this is a first read, so make sure that we get with staff if you have any questions before the next council meeting. Moving on to item number 7, 25-R-20. A resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Republic R3 School District for the city's use of a district bus to accommodate parks and recreation, summer events, and programs. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-20, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We have Ms. Carson Forbes to give us a brief overview.
Good evening. Carson Vaughn Recreation Superintendent. In 2023, the Republic School District agreed to provide the Parks and Recreation Department with use of a district bus through a rental program during the summer months to be utilized for field trip transportation for our summer adventure camps, as well as volunteer transportation for the Tiger Tri event that takes place in late July. An agreement was approved by City Council in 2023 and 2024 for specific dates in those calendar years. The 2025 agreement, however, contains language allowing the agreement to remain in effect for an initial term of three years with the dates to be agreed upon by both the school district as well as the Parks Department. Following the initial three-year term, the agreement may be renewed for successive three-year terms upon the execution of a written addendum to, again, be agreed upon by both the school district and the Parks Department. The terms outlined in the MOU state that the Parks Department will pay a flat fee of $50 per day, which includes routine maintenance of the bus, as well as fuel costs to be calculated at 50 cents per mile. The Parks Department will hire the driver that must be employed by the Republic School District, who will also take care of picking up and returning the bus to the transportation facility daily. All costs, including the rental fees and fuel, are not to exceed $2,500, and the final amount of daily use and fuel will be invoiced to the Parks Department following the last day of use in the summer. The past couple of years, this has proven to be a great option for our operations, and we're grateful for the relationship with the school district that has allowed us to do that. Based on the information, staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, comments from City Council? No questions, no comments? No one wants to be a bus driver? Sounds like a great deal that the city is getting, so I appreciate bringing that to City Council. If there's no questions from City Council, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 700. Moving on to the finance report. Got Mr. Bob Ford here this evening.
Good evening. Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer for the city. We won't spend a lot of time tonight going through, going through the financials, recognizing that this is the end of the first quarter. So, with the, a quarter does not a trend make, so at this point, we want to spend a little time talking about where we are at this point, but at the same time, not dwelling on it because we've got another three quarters to go for the year. If you look at the, as you recall, from how we have modified our financial reporting for the city, we break the components into an operating budget into a capital budget. So, if you look at the operating budget versus actuals for Q1, we've given you, starting from the left-hand side, moving to the right, the annual budget as a reminder of what we have planned for the year. Then, the quarterly budget is next to that, year-to-date actuals, a variance, better or worse, budget versus actual, and then what percentage that represents of the budget for the year and what's remaining in the annual budget. In a nutshell, and you're going to hear this from me tonight on a couple of occasions, but you'll notice that from an actual versus budget perspective, on both revenue and expenses, we're better than budget at this point in time. I'm telling you, it's timing. We are gonna, we're going to spend the money on the, on the expense side, and on the revenue side, you'll see things catch up over the year. Specifically, if you, if you look at, on the revenue side, where is one of our biggest positive variances, interest income? Interest income is a function of two things, rate and cash in the bank. And cash in the bank is a function of our spend rate in terms of how quickly we're spending down our cash on our two large projects. Currently, we have two fairly large capital projects going on, the wastewater treatment plant, and also, we've begun the new administration building to the south. So, one of the things you're seeing is the, is the phenomenon or the result of cash staying in the bank slightly longer and building interest income, and we will deplete that cash by the end of the year. Same thing on the expense side. You'll notice that personnel costs are better than budget at this point in time. Once again, we budgeted to staff additional jobs during the year. Some of those jobs have not been staffed yet. As a result, we have savings to budget, but our expectation is we will staff those jobs by the end of the year, and as a result, we'll eat up part of that, part of that savings. So, net-net, if you looked at the budget to actual from an operating budget perspective, you would, you would see that we're about $1 million better off on a net contribution perspective on the operating side. Once again, timing, timing on revenue and timing on expense. Moving on to the, I think, moving on to the capital budget. We'll try it. There we go. Moving on to the capital budget, same, same discussion here. Annual budget, quarterly budget, year-to-date actuals, better or worse than actuals, or budgets better or worse than budget, so a variance calculation. Once again, we break this down into sources and uses. How do we spend the money, and where did the money come from? The biggest thing in terms of variance to budget on the source side, you'll notice a $916,000 negative variance to budget with regards to grants and reimbursements. Once again, this is just timing of our, of our submission of reimbursement requests, the DNR for the wastewater treatment plant, and the receipt of those, that cash flow back into our bank account. Once again, we are going to submit all of those submissions for the year, and we will receive all of those, that money back. But at this point, if you just looked at a discrete period of time, the amount that we budgeted for the year has not occurred yet, even though by the end of the year, we will have received all of those dollars. Same thing on the use side. Capital expenditures are showing a $300,000 better than budget, but once again, it's a timing issue. We will spend those, those expenditures will be achieved by the end of the year, and as a result, we will end up, at this point in time, we're showing a, a negative variance to budget specifically because of the revenue stream that we had forecast has not come to fruition, but it will because, once again, it's just a timing issue. Moving on to the next page, which is a summary of both the operating and capital budget. I don't know why this is being a little stubborn tonight. There we go. Once again, putting the two together, operating and capital, you'll see that budget to actual for the first quarter for the operating side is our million-dollar better off. On the capital side, we're seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worse off. Once again, all of these components driven by timing and how we're spending and receiving cash. Net-net, we're about on budget, two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars better than budget. But once again, the first quarter does not a trend make. And so we want to make sure that we've identified, we're, we're, we're moving down the road. We've got two large projects currently underway, and as a result, we're seeing cash come into the city slightly different than we had forecasted, and we, and we're seeing cash go out of the city slightly different than we forecasted. The important thing, I think, for us tonight is to spend, well, I don't know why I can't get this, there we go. Is to spend some time talking about cash flow in and cash flow out. And we're going to spend time talking about sales tax revenue, and we're going to spend time talking about the wastewater treatment plant. If I, if you move to the next page and look at city sales tax received, you'll recall that we sent out a memo late last year where we said, "We're going to modify how we report sales tax revenue to you, the council, and to the population in general." And we made that modification for the following reason. There is a concept or a principle in accounting that you recognize the revenue in the period in which the revenue is generated, not in the period in which revenue is received. And historically, we had reported sales tax revenue based on how sales tax revenue was received. But the actuality is that sales tax revenue was actually generated in a different period. Let me give you an example. Sales tax revenue is a function of retail sales. Retail sales that occur in the month of January are not reported to the state until February, and then they're not reported to the city until March. And so as a result, the monies that we receive in March are actually for revenues that were generated in the month of January. And historically, the city for the umpteenth year has reported from, sales tax revenue from a received perspective, and then through the audit process, we go through a reconciliation and we true that up. We made a decision last year, as, as the finance seemed to say, "We're gonna, we're gonna stop that true-up process, and we're gonna report revenue as it's earned." And so for one of the reasons why we're talking about the first quarter in May is that we didn't know what the sales tax revenue for March looked like until May the eighth. And so one of the things that we have done is we've moved to that environment. So all the financials that we just talked about, recognize the revenue in which it is generated, i.e., revenue, cash that we received in March is for revenue that was generated in January. But it's easy for us to also talk about sales tax revenue received because that gives us an indication or a trend line of where sales tax revenue is going for the year. And so that's a long explanation to say, what I'm going to show you now is not sales tax revenue as we've reported it, but it's, in fact, as we received it because we've received five months of sales tax revenue. And we've compared that five months to the same five months last year and the year before. And so what you're seeing is that we're seeing sales tax revenue growth twenty-three to twenty-four of one-point-eight percent, and twenty-four to twenty-five of two-point-two percent. But if you dig a little deeper, part of the revenue that's generated in the period between twenty-four and twenty-five, that growth rate of two-point-two percent, part of that is driven by a new revenue stream. And if you backed out the marijuana sales tax revenue stream, growth twenty-four to twenty-five is more like one percent. And what did we budget for the year? A growth of one percent. So once again, we're seeing a slight improvement in sales tax revenue as indicated by how sales taxes come into the city. But once again, we're not seeing those kind of sales tax revenue growth numbers that we saw in twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two. We're seeing, as we've talked about for the last three years, modest sales tax revenue growth year over year over year. Moving on to the next page, I'm going to spend a little time talking about the wastewater treatment plant and where we are in that process, where we are on funding, where we are in expenditures. Some of these charts you've seen before. These are just freshened for where we are today. But remember, the wastewater treatment plant, the first section at the top of the page is basically taking our expenditures and breaking it into two different sort of matrices. One, looking at it by funding source, and then looking at it by year. So if you look at the various funding sources we have for the wastewater treatment plant, we've got two sources of debt financing, the Series twenty-two bond offering, and also the SRF debt that we put in place last year that we have yet to draw on. We also have two grant funding sources. The first one being a twenty-five-million-dollar grant that was a seventy-thirty split. DNR was funding seventy percent. We were funding thirty percent of that. And that was ultimately funded with ARPA money. So the ARPA money came into the state through, through DNR. DNR administered that grant to us on a seventy-thirty basis. We've spent all of that money. Then there was an additional twenty-five-million-dollar grant that was funded through general, through the state's general revenue stream, and we will spend all twenty-five million of that this year. We're going to spend a little time talking about that here in a second. But once again, to try to give you an idea, by year, by funding source, we end up with sixty-three-point-eight percent of the funding for the project, the one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-million-dollar project. We, we end up with sixty-four percent of that funding coming through debt sources and thirty-six-point-two percent coming through grant sources. Now, as you know, there is an additional twenty-five million that is currently in the budget, that's on the governor's desk for this next year. If that twenty-five-million dollars remains in the budget and is signed into law, and that twenty-five million comes to the city, what we will do is we will lower the amount that we're going to draw on the SRF debt, and we replace that with the twenty-five-million dollars coming, that'll be administered by DNR. There is no, at least at this point, there is no match requirement with that. So we'll submit those reimbursement requests. The monies will come back to us. And we'll, once again, we'll trade debt for grant money. Once again, the, the bottom box is just a reminder of the Series twenty-two bond offering, which is the most significant funding source we've had for the wastewater treatment plant, and how we use those funds for both this building that we're currently occupying and then also the wastewater treatment plant. In total, because we issued the bonds at a premium in two thousand and twenty-two, we received forty-eight-point-five-million dollars because of the premium that was generated at the time that we issued the bonds, when in fact, the principal repayment of the bonds is forty-five-point-four million. And as we carved those monies up and put five-point-two million aside to build this building, the residual of forty-three-point-four million was what was left out of the forty-eight for us to, to move forward on the wastewater treatment plant. Moving on to the next page, this is another analysis that looks at the wastewater treatment plant, sources and uses from inception. So once again, trying to look, go back to the beginning of time when we first started talking about this project, and looking at the various funding sources and how those monies have been spent over time. So if we go back, we looked at, we used some unrestricted cash that we had on our balance sheet early on in the project to be able to fund part of the initial work on the wastewater treatment plant. ARPA funded one-point-nine-million dollars of this. We've had interest income over the, over the last four years of one-point-eight million. The Series twenty-two bonds generated another forty-three-point-four million. Remember from the prior page, that was the residual component of the Series twenty-two debt that we didn't, we, you know, we carved off five-point-two million for the building. The residual was for the wastewater treatment plant. The DNR grant, the seventy-thirty money that was funded with ARPA dollars, twenty-five million. And then year-to-date, or at least up until the, the end of the first quarter, we had received twenty-million-one-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-two-thirty-two in the DNR fifty-fifty grant money. So that's the total funding sources for the wastewater treatment plant, ninety-two-point-nine-million dollars. How was that money spent? You can see that Burns and Mack, in a number of different striations here of how we split the money out, we spent seventy-six-point-eight-million dollars with them. And I've broken it out above where I looked at how much of that was reimbursement and how much of that was match money from DNR, or match from us and reimbursement from DNR. So if, if you look at the little section up to the right, on the DNR ARPA-funded money, they provided twenty-five million. Our match on that was ten-million-seven-fourteen, for a total of thirty-five-point-seven-million dollars that was funded for that tranche of money for the wastewater treatment plant. On the fifty-fifty money, as of the end of March, we had spent twenty-one-point-two-million dollars on the match side. DNR had reimbursed us twenty million on the reimbursement side. If you add all those numbers up, you get to the seventy-six million that we, that I've identified that have gone to fund the various invoices from Burns and Mack. There were some, also some other expenditures that were not grant-eligible. So initially, when the project was established, the negotiation with DNR happened, there were a number of projects that were identified that these projects will count toward reimbursement. These projects will count toward match. These projects are under the, the wastewater treatment plant umbrella, but they don't qualify for grant treatment. For instance, monies that we would spend on a lobbyist would not qualify, even though we would capture it as part of the project, as part of the project expense, it's not something that we could turn into DNR and say, reimburse us for some of these dollars. So at the end of the day, we've spent seventy-six-point-eight-million dollars with our, our friends at Burns and Mack, three-point-two-million dollars on these sort of grant ineligible dollars for a total of eighty million. If you look at the total funding source less what we've spent, the cash available on our balance sheet, and I actually, instead of going into the end of the first quarter, I went to the end of April because I wanted to be a little fresher on the numbers, the cash balance that we had available to spend on the wastewater treatment plant at that point was twelve-point-eight-million dollars. So once again, this is really a cash reconciliation to tie back to what's currently sitting on our balance sheet versus how the monies have come in and how we've spent the monies. So one of the big questions that came up either at our last meeting or maybe at the, at the workshop is, "The state's fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. Will we have exhausted all of the twenty-five million of the fifty-fifty grant dollars by the end of the fiscal year? Because none of those dollars have been re-appropriated in next year's budget." We did a couple of scenarios here. I won't bore you with the, the complications of DNR, but basically, initially, when the project was first taken to DNR and there would be, we identified how we were going to fund this, instead of saying, "You're going to spend a dollar, and we're going to send you fifty cents back." What was, what was agreed to with DNR is there would be certain projects within the context of the wastewater treatment plant project that would be called match projects, and some projects would be called reimbursement projects. The two of them together, when you added them up, when they were totally done, would be about fifty-fifty. But effectively, what was happening, we were spending money on the match side, and we were spending a hundred percent of that. And DNR then would say, "Well, here's a reimbursement project. I'll give you a hundred percent reimbursement on that project, and by the time we get to the end, it's all going to net out." Which is why we've received twenty million in reimbursement, but we've spent twenty-one million in match dollars. So given that, we are in a, we went through a small negotiation with DNR where we said, "Look, you need to get your reimbursement dollars equal to our match dollars." And therefore, every dollar that was submitted to DNR for the last couple of months, they've been funding at a hundred percent to get our match and reimbursement positions equal. Once we get to that equal position, then every dollar submitted will be funded at fifty-fifty. I tell you that basically to say, we went, we've run two different scenarios, and in both scenarios, we will spend every bit of the twenty-five million by the end of June. There's some complications and some issues here, but we could have all of it spent potentially by the end of May, but by the end of June, we love to spend all twenty-five million. That is the most important thing with regards to the twenty-five-million dollars that we currently, that we currently have on the table, is that we don't, we don't want to leave a dollar on the table at the end of the year. Moving on to cash. Cash is of March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. I've broken it into unrestricted and restricted cash. I'm just going to identify a few buckets here. Just recognize that as of the end of March, we had forty-million dollars, forty-point-six-million dollars in the bank spread between unrestricted and restricted monies. Thirteen million in unrestricted, almost twenty-eight million on the, on the restricted side. Let's just kind of tick through a couple of high points. Restricted monies for the general fund. Those are restricted in a general sense that we've restricted those. Those are the monies that we've set aside for the building next door. So you recognize the five-point-four-six-five-seven-six-six is, in fact, the budget number for the new administration building that's going in next door. Parks and Rec, one-million-nine-seventy-four-three-ten. That restricted money ties to the J.R. Martin project, and those monies are set aside to complete the project that we had identified with, on the J.R. Martin side. Fire, two-point-two-million dollars. That's the new fire truck. Those are, monies are, are, they're really self-imposed restrictions. We've said, "These are monies that can only be spent for these reasons." This is a fire truck set aside. Wastewater Treatment Plant, at the time, we had fourteen-point-three-million dollars of restricted monies. Most of that was, in fact, the wastewater treatment plant project. There are some, it's some additional dollars that were tied to impact fees and some other things that are restricted in nature, but they're not specifically tied to the wastewater treatment plant project. That summary, you've seen this schedule a number of times. The only thing I want to highlight, and I reminded you of this back in, in March when we did the workshop, that in this fiscal year, we're going to pay off a number of, of debt components. One, the fire truck that's, and I've highlighted these, they're probably hard to see, but the fire truck, we're going to pay off one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand dollars. The Series twenty-seventeen debt, we're paying off in this year, as well as the excavator dozer. So in total, we're going to pay off, in principle, three-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-seven-four-seven in those highlighted areas, as well as the other debt payments that we're making. And that'll free up in debt service, three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-three-oh-five, moving forward. So the importance here is that those items that we've been paying on for a number of years, that debt service rolls off this year. And moving on to the next page, this is the debt service, two thousand and twenty-six, and moving forward, giving the repayment that we've identified on the prior page. giving the repayment that we've identified on the prior page. And so what we've got left after this year, we've got parks debt, the Series 23 debt. We've got Mamu, mid Missouri Mamu 1, the MTFC money for the MM5 lane. And then we've got the Series 22 debt split between the Bill's Building, as well as the wastewater treatment plant and the SRF debt. Now, this SRF debt amortization schedule here is assuming we borrow the full 44 million dollars. If in fact, we don't borrow the 44 million dollars, because we've got an additional 25 million dollar grant, that number will actually will drop to about a million dollars of debt service per year. So once again, this is capturing our debt service as it exists today. And the importance of this is just to identify that we've rolled off a number of components of debt in 2025. But we still have a fairly significant debt service schedule over the next, call it 30 years. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any questions from City Council? Mr. Gerke?
Anything, you went through a lot of stuff. I mean, any highlights, concerns, anything, just overall, it was Q1, but.
Yeah, no, I would say at this point, nothing really jumps out at me. I think there's a number of things we may bring back to council in the next two or three months as we do a budget amendment, as we look at things that were maybe were budgeted in '24 where the money didn't get spent. We still have the money sitting in the bank, but we need to put it back in the budget for this year. So there's a number of things we'll bring back to the table. That's probably two or three months out. The importance here is, one, sales tax revenue is our bread and butter and we're on budget. So I think the message there is, one, that is one of a positive nature. And two, but it also says that, hey, we really are, we're still only seeing kind of 1% growth year over year. So, one, we budgeted at the right level and, two, we're on budget. So sales tax revenue is always a concern of all of ours. And I think there, we've got some comfort in looking at what might be happening over the remaining part of the year. There's nothing on the expense side that jumps out at me at this point. Right now, we're underrunning our expense budget, but once again, it's a timing issue. We will spend those monies this year. I think the positive thing to walk away with is that, one, we've got money on the balance sheet and the wastewater treatment plant is 100% funded, with or without the 25 million dollar grant that we hope and assume is coming down the road. No matter what, it's funded. And, and two, paying off these miscellaneous debt items like the Series 2017 debt, the fire truck, the excavator dozer, those things just free up more cash flow for those specific funds that fund that activity. So those are the things that I would take away out of what we're looking at at the end of the first quarter. Cash-wise, we're still sitting on more cash than we thought we would have at this point in time, but we're just not spending it as quickly.
Another question I have, and it's a long process, 2024 audit timeframe on?
2024 audit, in talking with the auditors yesterday, our plan at this point, we tentatively penciled in, if you will, June 17th for their readout. They're just about done with their work. I haven't seen a draft yet, but all of their fieldwork was done about a month ago. And they've been doing their internal compliance review. We'll all be writing the MDNR in the next couple of weeks. And like I said, their expectation is to deliver that on the 17th. There was some discussion of whether or not they would be able to be here in person on the 17th. I said, I think it's important that you're here physically making the presentation. So if the 17th doesn't work for you to be physically present, then we need to find another date.
KPM, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Do we have any additional questions from City Council? Anything else to add? Seeing that there is none, thank you, Mr. Ford, for presenting all that information to us this evening. Moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Representative Davidson, thank you for being here tonight. So I know that we just covered a lot of territory on the wastewater treatment plant. And yes, there is money in the budget. And I thank you for the work you've done in this session. Again, as our vice budget chair, it's pretty special to walk through the Capitol, know that your representative is the vice budget chair, which positions him. He's positioned himself very well. I remember, gosh, how long has it been since, was it night 2019?
Yeah, five years.
So he walked to my office in downtown. He brought a notepad and we sat there and talked for two hours about his potential run for office. And I knew that day, we had a long conversation on purpose because I was like, he's got a strategy, he's got an idea, he's got ideals and he's going to take them there. And it's no shock to watch you do your work in the Capitol. It's been a pleasure to see that take place. And so thank you for your work. I know that it's been a lot of time, a lot of phone calls. I know that this has been an even more busier learning year for you. Came at you fast and hard and I think you've handled it extremely well. So I'm proud to call you my friend and a colleague in the world that we have to work in. And I'm proud to say, you know, how well you represent Republic in that Capitol. I wish I could have a video of that so people could see. This is your official at work on your behalf because you handle it like a true statesman. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. So I'm proud of you at the same time because you actually said what you were going to do. You went and did it. So thank you for that. What is probability, you know, this is my last meeting with the city because I'm not going to be here in two weeks because I'm going to be out of town for a pre-planned meeting. But again, I'll work on our, an event that I already had scheduled. But Brian Buckner, I saw here in the room, Diane, thank you for being here. Brian is the mayor that hired me, interviewed me, grilled me. Maybe not as much as I'm getting in general, but, but no, I, Brian and Diane, it's great to see you again. It's been a while. Me and Brian have played golf for the last nine years. He's called, I've blamed him many times on the phone for how it's been, but not really. But I do get to stand in this capacity tonight and call myself tall in the work that other people have done years before. And Brian, you were one of them when you guys consolidated Brookline, extended the utilities into Brookline and created that opportunity with that consolidation. A lot of people missed out on how big a deal that was and how risky that was. I probably one of the biggest belly acres. When I got here, the city had 12 and a half million dollars of debt. Wasn't I chief? He's shaking his head over there. I'm like, who in the world goes to debt in Brookline? I was like, but I apologize. But when I look at where the city is at from that position, Brian, what you all have done. I've had five mayors in nine years. Dan Harder, you got to fill in whenever he decided he wanted to go off to, was it Nashville?
So was Oats.
So, yeah, I thank you for your service and your support. Jeff Usri, Matt Russell, and you, Mayor Franklin. It's a lot of mayors. But I'm going to tell you something, Brian, when we came in, you interviewed me. We had a pretty general conversation about what you wanted for your city and what the opportunity was in Brookline. And you made it very clear in that interview process. And what I tell you, I said, I believe my skillset matches your need. If ever that time that skillset's no longer matching that need, it may be potential for me to do something different. And we knew that, we discussed it from the beginning, what transition may look like. And so I just want to, to thank you for being here. I think it just takes tremendous pride, I mean, and sacrifice to come down here and be here tonight to support me and continue to support this city. I appreciate that. I'm going to save comment for the rest of my staff. We're going to have an event. I look forward to doing that just because we lost a friend today. We lost Fred Prisk this morning. He worked in our street department. He had an unfortunate accident, complete fluke, had to have surgery, had some struggles in surgery. And so it's hard to celebrate much when you lose a guy like Fred. And there was never a day that guy, hardly ever, you didn't see a smile on his face and sweat in his shirt. He did it the right way. And I remember going to Fred, why it's so emotional? Because Fred is the guy, I asked when I first got here, because I asked this of Brian too, I said, what can your public works department do? So I had to go to Fred and said, Fred, I want to build a road behind, by ROI Mercy. I said, can you do it? And this was probably one of the riskiest things I've ever done here by far. Worked out great now, but Fred said, we can do it. I remember going out there and seeing him build that street with some of the smallest equipment on the planet and thinking, David, what have you got these poor souls into? You know, but they went out there and they fought. And anybody remember the picture that's sitting in my offices when we completed that street? We all stood out there. I rented a bus. When it was done, I wanted those employees to see what they had done. And when we opened up ROI Mercy, Fred and his family got to be inside that building. And I just would be amiss to say, really, tonight's about Fred. That street behind it, Amazon, he built. But we lost a great friend today. We lost a great man. And my thoughts and prayers go out to his family and to the staff that see him every day that's hurting today. We mourn as an organization. Citizens probably don't even know the nights he's been out plowing and doing the stuff he does, but he served this community very, very well. And I just want to, I want to memorialize Fred tonight. So, so thank you for that. Otherwise, I'll reserve any comments for a later date.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have anyone on City Council that would like to have any comments?
Well, yeah. Back a long time ago, 2016, when we hired you in, had the whole process, Gary was involved, Mayor Buckner was involved. You said something to the first meeting that I just, it bugged me ever since you said it. And you remember what it was? Say it, say it. You know, about the axe.
About the what?
The axe. Abraham Lincoln said, whenever he takes a job cutting down a tree or cutting some wood for somebody.
Yeah, you didn't like that comment. I'm trying to think of what I said.
You said, Abraham Lincoln said, if I'm going to go get a job cutting a tree down or cutting wood, so I'm going to spend the first four hours sharpening my axe. And I was like, here in the Ozark, you better show up with a sharp axe. So with that in mind, while you're going to Springfield, here's a sharp axe, get started.
I still have a center view when I had the chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harder. Do we have anyone else on? Would you like to respond, Mr. Cameron?
I remember this statement and I remember him not liking it.
How'd you get that past the metal detector? Great stuff. Does anyone else on council have anything that they would like to say in closing this evening? Mr. Gerke?
Just want to say, David doesn't like bragging and I'm sure he's get a lot of this credit to staff, but just kind of looked over the last nine years, I haven't been here for the whole time. But, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of passion and effort that goes in behind the scenes with David and staff. And kind of wanted to take a quick second to celebrate some of the things that have happened over the last nine years. And I'm not going to hit them all and some of these may not be completely accurate. But, you know, I'm kind of, you know, I work in the finance industry and you kind of compare things year to year. But, you know, and some of these aren't dollar and cents. But, you know, improvement of parks and trails, J.R. Martin Park, the Shooter Creek Trail, Aquatic Park, you know, a variety of capital improvements over the last few years. Something I think is unique, when I first got to City Council, not understanding the funding, you know, securing funding of outside sources, what I'd call those. I think there's over 100,000, 100 million dollars. A lot of that's with, you know, the MM and US 60, the wastewater facility. But I think that's something unique that, you know, David and his staff really helped to minimize our cost on there. You know, public safety, I think we, as a group, really wanted to raise, pay for existing staff. You know, increase retirement benefits by 9%, got involved in the logger program, lagger program, I guess. You know, we've increased police force, fire department, added a variety of equipment. Obviously, the wastewater overhaul has been huge. You actually look at the numbers and I was telling, you know, Mr. Ford earlier today, it's tough on a city to look at the financials. And that's what I do on a day-to-day basis. But, you know, over 118% growth in annual revenue, over 200% growth in assets on the balance sheet. Again, it's tough to look at that and compare year to year, but there's been tremendous growth. I know David would say, you know, give credit to the staff, which is due, but appreciate the leadership, the passion. I mean, you know, everyone may always agree with everyone, but you can't deny there's a lot of passion. And so appreciate the time and effort you put in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Do we have anyone else on council that would like to say anything this evening?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cameron.
I want the final word, Dan.
Well, I've got, I've got a word too. You said, you want a final word after the mayor? You get a final word from the mayor before the final word.
Well, because we're going to be, the staff and I are going to be meeting in general at some collective point. But I would be remiss not to say to the staff in a public setting, yeah, I'll say, I'll say, you guys are awesome. You know, I love you. But it's hard to capture everybody. Gary Wilson, I could go around there, a lot of different people. You found me my house that I sold. And so it's like, so it was Gary that found it. You couldn't find a house when I first got to town. Remember that? There were like 50 houses under construction and finding one was very hard. And so we changed that. But, yeah, I look forward to talking to the staff and addressing you all. But really, I get to stand on your shoulders too and call myself tall. I use that term a lot. But really, when people ask me about Republic, I was in, I was in an event last week called Faith in Business and I was speaking. And somebody brought up Amazon again. I said, you know, I don't want to talk about Amazon. I want to talk about the staff that delivered on those projects. What took, what used to take us a long time. Heart of America, when I first got here, was almost a year in the making. And like I said, we got Amazon, the work done in six days. And so everybody looks at, oh, we got it done in six days. But what we have to change is the culture, the mindset inside the organization is really what I've told Lisa in the last few weeks. It's offensive when someone says, what are we going to do? It's like, man, we've got a machine under the hood that drives this thing very fast every single day. And if I have nothing but the utmost faith in that group, to the point that I have freedom lever, I take off and I let other people take off. And I say, listen, we could, the system can run without one person. And I never wanted to draw attention to me, but I draw attention to our employees and again to Fred, so.
That is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Yeah, that was a, that's a lot of great stuff. And I promise my list isn't as long as Mr. Gerke's, but Eric's always have a lot of information. So that was great information. I was thinking back and, you know, it has been, it's been a long time. I was thinking back all the way back to Brian Buckner and when you came on board here in council. It was about the time, a little bit after that, when I got involved. And that's a long list of accomplishments. And it's, my heart goes out to the staff and with Fred and everything that they're going through at this time. And it's interesting that you happened to mention that very thing because those were the three things that I had picked of my time that I remembered the most to talk about tonight. And one of them was the 2020 bus trip that you just referenced where we went out. I could even remember taking the ditch and wondering if Ms. Poole was going to go out the window. That was a lot of fun. And, you know, highlighting a lot of the hard work of staff. And, you know, one of your greatest accomplishments here has been in the staff. And working with staff, working with other government, other parts of government, working with other people all around us, it's just such a great example of the hard work that you've put into all of these great individuals here. So that, that trip there, it meant a lot to me, I know. And it meant a lot that this council was here at the time. And between all of our different mayors and different council members, that was a fun celebration time because we had COVID, we had a lot of different things. We had the response from COVID. And of course, Mr. Cameron and the City of Republic, we had a response to COVID that put our trust in the citizens and I really think encapsulated seeing the citizens as our greatest asset. And so I just wanted to thank, you know, Mr. Cameron and of course, all the people that were here during that time for their response and acknowledging our self-responsibility as citizens that we have here in Republic and acknowledging the people as our greatest asset, as we've always said. The other thing that I wanted to talk about that I had put in here, other than the incredible team that you've assembled for us, was this very building here. And going back to Fred and everyone else in the builds that had to work. When I first got here, it was like a Tetris puzzle down at City Hall. Every time it snowed or something happened, anytime it got cold, you had to figure out how to plug stuff in. And now you know a good electrician, but back then it was a challenge. And I saw that challenge and I recognized that. And speaking to the last eight years, it's absolutely incredible to where we've been, having this building, you know, seeing the difference in staff and having a place to take ownership in. That's meant a lot to me, not just as mayor, but as council member in coming through that process. So I wanted to be short and I wanted to be sweet because I got an invite to that council or the lunch. So I hope I get to come. But, yeah, super great. Thank you for everything, David. Thank you for all the help that you've given us down in council. Thank you for all of the guidance. There's been a lot. This is a big learning lesson for all of us. So, David, thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted a few things to close out. I wanted to thank everyone for that great work session last week, of course. As a reminder, Have a Blast is coming up soon, Friday, June 27th, if I've got that correct. So make sure you save the date for that. I would like to thank, we have Representative Bishop Davidson here this evening. But I would like to thank everyone up in Missouri, Senator Trent, all of our state officials that were working our half this year in session. So thank you for keeping us in your mind and thank you for being here this evening. Another save the date, we do have the OTO Legislative Breakfast coming up October twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. I know a few of you have made that in the past. It's always a good breakfast, it's a great place to connect with legislators, connect with the OTO Board, see, learn more about the OTO and keep up with all of us on that. Last week, I forgot to congratulate our council member, Eric Gerke, on his trust from the council's appointment as our mayor pro temp. So Eric and I, we're kind of like the double mint twins now. Got to take that one. Maybe not quite, but that's an old commercial. I knew that was within his alley. So thank you, you know, to everyone last week. I had a great opportunity to go down to the Salvation Army and spend some time with Majors Amos and Cindy Shields. You know, I appreciate their invite and all that they do here for the community as well. With that, I know it's a little bit long-winded. We do have executive session this evening. With what's going on, we're going to take a quick break before going into executive session, but if anyone would like to talk to David before then, we can extend that to seven minutes, so. Executive, I'm very generous. Executive, I'm very frugal. Well, I've got a, well, yeah. So moving on to executive session, no further action other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO six one zero point zero two one. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under RSMO six one zero point zero two one point three, hiring, firing, promotion or disciplinary disciplining personnel, closed session, closed vote, closed record, and RSMO six one zero point zero two one point one three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants or employment, closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we're now going to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Neil.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerke.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.